An inconvenience.
Well, I can't even do that, you know, I can't even, I can't get this hand up high enough to do this.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a nerve. It's changed. I can't, I can't even hold up the empty hand.
No, that's good though, that it's moving.
Did you move the table?
Nor you, man.
You should do that.
Rub some dirt on it. Walk it off.
Well, sometimes you can't hold your hand.
Believe me, I know.
Okay, I can remember where it was.
I've tried.
Okay. Will we talk about scheduling contact in different places also?
Um, we can.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll bring it up so that it's ready.
Because who's bringing the contact section?
It's been given or it's been placed in that, um, that's done just one of them. Um.
I mean, we have to make some contacts, not on that list, right?
Yeah. So, um, we're.
This meeting to order at seven oh one P M. On Monday, August nineteenth, the year twenty twenty four. Uh, got some consent agenda items along with minutes of the August fifth twenty twenty four school board meeting and the August fifteenth twenty twenty four school board special meeting. Uh, no professional staffing recommendations. We have some co-curricular, uh, along with some personnel items, not necessary for vote. So I would look for a motion to approve the consent a- agenda as presented.
I could do that.
Thank you, Bruce. Now the second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor, please.
Can we have a little discussion first?
Oh, we do. Yeah, I'm sorry. Discussion.
Uh, last meeting under resignations, administrative staffing recommendations, there was a resignation, um, at Wabisa, and the vote was four one. I'm, I'm wondering if that's correct.
I think you were the one who voted no.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, because of other things, other parts of that. Yes. That is correct.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
Nope, no worries. Any other discussion?
And just so that folks know, you have to vote for the whole thing, yes or no. And there are portions of it that I didn't agree with.
Is that correct? Yep. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries five zero. Uh, that moves us to our public comments. I've got a short read here before we get started. In accordance with school board policy one six seven dot three, the McFarland School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings from individuals who are present at the meeting, participating virtually, or have sent an email to the board president or superintendent. Participants are required to register to speak upon arriving at that meeting, provide their name, address, and any group affiliation before speaking. Address only topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. Recognize that the board will not respond to comments during the meeting unless the item is on, on the published agenda. Limit comments to under five minutes or six hundred written words, and of course, do our best to maintain decorum. Um, we have some comments that are to be read during the school meet, school board meeting, and I've got some in person. I think we'll go ahead and read the, uh, the sent in comments first. Uh, Bruce, you want to start?
Sure. I have one pronunciations, right? She's a, a member of my son's foreign language department. Is it Becky Callen? Okay. Um, I know where's Becky. Anyway, my name is Becky Callen. I'm a world language teacher and club advisor to two student organizations at M H S. I'm also a member of the McFarland community along with my husband and two-year-old daughter and future Spartan. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the important work the school board has been and is doing to ensure teachers and community members have a voice in the referendum process. This is difficult but critically important work you are doing to build consensus for a referendum that absolutely must pass. I am reaching out for public, for public comment today to show my support for survey option number two, four year, uh, option number two, four-year non-recurring. Based on numerous conversations I've seen online, I believe the non-recurring option has the best chance at winning support in the community while still being able to meet our needs as a district. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to continue to work together from now through November to ensure a referendum passes. Becky Callen. Should we do the second one?
Sure.
The next one is, uh, Susan Booth, who I believe is sitting here. Um, dear members of the school board, I hope this email finds you well. My name is Susan Booth, and I have the privilege of teaching art in our district for past eight years. Prior to that, I worked in the high school office for another eight years. I'm writing to seek your support for the upcoming referendum, given the pressing issues we'd face in our art department. Our current budget constraints have led to larger classroom sizes, reduced support, impacting our ability to provide quality education. The cost of art supplies has surged, yet our budgets have been cut. We've been requesting additional, an additional kiln for the past six years. But each time, we've encountered barriers, first financial, then related to electrical and ventilation concerns. Despite Ms. Lindy Herb Cole Teacher Fellowship earmarking funds, huh, all right, let me read that again. Despite Ms. Lindy's, um, Herb Cole Teacher Fellowship earmarking funds for this kiln. Is that a thousand dollars, I believe? I think it is. Our requests have not been prioritized. Additionally, you might remember the Bowls for Hunger event initiated by our M S D art teachers, which we had to halt due to COVID. This event was run entirely by volunteers and relied on our passion for supporting the community. Community. We decided not to resume it as our team is already stretched too thin. We've also had to make adjustments to our youth arts month show to manage our workload effectively. As discussions about the financial future of our schools continue, I urge you to consider the needs of our department and the impact these budget cuts are having on our students and programs. Your support in the upcoming referendum would be invaluable and help us address these challenges. Thank you for your time and consideration. Susan Booth.
Tom?
Okay. Dear McFarland School Board members, thank you for the time and care you are taking regarding the upcoming referendum, making choices that best support the success of our students and staff. I'm writing to first advocate for survey option number three, three-year recurring. The best thing that we can give the kids of, of McFarland is consistent, high-quality care from our staff. This option allows for staff to no longer worry about making ends meet each month and therefore be present for each of one of our kids in our classrooms. This option makes me, someone who left my last two districts because of continual shifts and cuts in the F T E, feel comfortably, feel comfortable truly digging into my role here and no longer worrying about if my job or the music department as a whole will experience cuts. I love this community and so grateful to be able to give back to the place where I gained so much as a student. Thank you for considering this option and believing that we, the McFarland community, can come together to give our students consistency and high-quality education in every possible way. Thank you again for your time, Elise Weber. Next one. Hello, my name is Heidi Meyer. I am a seventh grade teacher and have taught in this district over fifteen years. To maintain or improve the quality of education in McFarland, we need to invest in our learning community. As a teacher, I always do my best to provide the best education for my students. If the, if the school district is given less, I and my fellow teachers will be able to provide less. I am in full support of option two or option three. Sincerely, Heidi Meyer.
Okay. I've got two more. What's that?
Oh, you're leading this.
Yeah. Uh, dear school board members, thank you again for considering these different referendum options to be placed on the November ballot. My name is Brian Ward, and I'm a social studies teacher at M H S going into my sixth year. I attended and spoke at the meeting on Thursday and unfortunately cannot make it tonight. I appreciated the time and thoughtfulness you all came, you all came with your comments and your collective understanding of the seriousness of this situation. In my statement last week, I suggested the idea of a non-recurring referendum. After hearing the debate and other comments from citizens, I was shifted to support for option three, three-year recurring. Obviously, this will allow us to maintain staff and compete with our neighbors for high-quality teachers. Personally, I feel appreciated if we go with this option for all of the tireless and unseen work that the teachers do for our students. Therefore, our students, especially our most vulnerable, will continue to be supported. A point made last meeting was that we need to show them no votes from April, that we have heard them. And if we went with option three, we would be signaling that we didn't hear them. I think that is false for two reasons. Number one, cuts have already been made post-April referendum, and two, this is an overall smaller dollar amount than in April. Both of these show the community that you have heard them. The Thursday meeting and tonight's meeting involve difficult and hard decisions. But that will be nothing compared to the work that will need to be done between now and November. I think with a higher turnout election and having the community and advocates ready to go this time means that things are shifting. As you know, we will need all hands on deck from the school board to community groups like Spartan Forward, the McFarland Federation of Teachers and More. It will be a tough couple of months, but I truly believe that this can pass if we do the work. Hearing the former no votes last week showed me with education and advocacy that some no votes will change to yes votes, and we will have new yes votes with a higher turnout. I appreciate all the work you have done in these difficult times, but this is a reminder to not take our schools for granted. We need schools what they, what they are, and we have to fight for them. Brian. And finally. Good evening. My name is Patrick Toohey, and I'm entering my tenth year teaching and coaching at McFarland High School. I am reaching out to show support for option three, recurring. I think this option is already a significant compromise from April, based on the needs of the school district and concerns of the community. Option three provides the most help for our students, helps keep the district competitive in Dane County, and makes good long-term fiscal sense for the district and for the community. I understand the concerns of getting option three passed and could live with option two, though I think people have to understand the relatively small cost difference between becoming a stagnant district and one that's building for the future. In any event, I think this needs to be a recurring referendum to avoid facing an even bigger fiscal cliff in the near future. Whatever the board decides, we're going to have to work together tirelessly, tirelessly to get the rest of the community on board. Thank you to everyone who has been involved in this process and has worked so hard to make the best of a tough situation. It's good to see people coming together to try to do what's best for the students and for McFarland. Thank you, Patrick Toohey. Now, we have some in-person comments. Uh, we'll start with Cassandra Dennis and Sam, Samantha Zilanga.
Wait till I don't hear anyone. Wait till I don't hear anyone. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samantha Zilanga.
And I am Cassandra Dennis. We are proud to represent the group Spartan Forward. We are a group of dedicated citizens who are united by a common cause to support and enhance public education in our community. Our journey began on the evening of April second, when we saw the referendum fail and felt a deep sense of urgency, knowing we could do more to help this referendum pass in November. We are now an organized force with a clear goal to bring awareness about the referendum, to provide accurate information to voters, and ensure that it passes.
Our group includes a diverse group of experts from education and healthcare to law, business management, human resources, statistics, nonprofit management, and business ownership. The one thing we all have in common is advocacy. We've become a registered P A C, established a business bank account, and set up Venmo to streamline our efforts. Our online store is up and running, offering vote yes gear to rally support. We have already made significant strides. We have participated in trainings and will continue to learn from the experts at the Wisconsin Public Education Network. Our network extends to similar groups in towns like Stoughton, Fort Atkinson, and Wauwautosa, and we've built strong relationships in McFarland. We are engaging with the teachers' union, labor unions, local politicians, and business sponsors, and we've raised substantial funds in the recent weeks.
Our commitment and support of this referendum is unwavering. We want you to know that regardless of our personal opinions we might hold, our group is united in our support for your decisions. We understand the weight of the choices before you, and we are here to back you every step of the way. We have already been active on social media, reaching thousands to provide accurate information, meeting updates, and consistent responses to misinformation. Our posts have reached many people in the community with a reach of over six thousand. We are planning to enhance our visibility further throughout the community, including opt eds, yard signs, mailers, and cam and scene. Next week, we'll be, we will be ordering two hundred yard signs to spread our message even farther.
Please note us in your handout that, um, you have a copy of our campaign strategy that we plan to enact over the next seventy-eight days. We are dedicated to giving this our all. Our goal is clear, to ensure that this referendum passes and our public education system receives the support it deserves. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your commitment to our shared vision. Together, we can make a difference.
Thank you very much. Chris McGrath.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. I'm Chris McGrath, and I've been teaching here at McFarland High School for the last ten years. I am also a homeowner and a parent in this district. I'm here tonight to advocate for option number three on a recurring basis. My daughter Charlotte just finished kindergarten at C E P S, and she had an outstanding educational experience. One of the things that I, as a parent, found most striking was her mental and emotional growth over the course of the school year. Uh, at C E P S, the kindergarten classes attend life skills as part of their specialist curriculum alongside P E and music and art. Uh, the class is taught by Carrie Bakkenhour, who is an outstanding teacher and a close friend. And Charlotte comes home and talks about things like emotional regulation. She does deep breathing exercises, and I even catch her practicing yoga poses when she needs to calm herself down. It is an incredible curriculum, and I can say as her parent that I am thrilled that Mrs. Bakkenhour is a part of Charlotte's educational experience. Except with the cuts that are already in place for the coming school year. If Charlotte's life skills class this year falls on Wednesdays or Thursdays, uh, Carrie Bakkenhour will not be at the front of that classroom. Two district office personnel are teaching life skills on those days so that Mrs. Bakkenhour can provide support to C E P S administration while Dr. Hauser is covering down at the Wabisa Intermediate School. None of the options on the table before you provide a restoration of the one point two million cuts that we've already trimmed. I know that my daughter's educational experience and those of all of her classmates will be different this year without the consistency of the life skills curriculum. And this is just one of the many cuts that will affect the learning of all of our students. This is just me talking as a parent tonight. I could talk endlessly as a teacher about how this financial instability has affected and will continue to affect my students and their learning, but we don't have time for that. With that in mind, I firmly believe we need to formulate a question tonight that asks for option number three on a recurring basis, because our students cannot continue to have their education disrupted. We need the financial stability provided by this option in order to keep our district strong. Thank you very much.
Carolyn Kow. Welcome.
I'm Carolyn Kow. I just, um, member of the McFarland community, and I sent three kids to school here. I have a grandchild that goes to school here. And we came here for this school district. And I wanted to thank everybody on this school board and to be here to sit with you tonight specifically, because you have to make a hard decision on behalf of all of us. And there are people in this room and people online, people that live in our neighborhoods, that will be happy with your decision, and there will be people who will not be happy with your decision. And you have to go home and carry that for all of us, and I appreciate that, and I know how difficult that is. And I'm here tonight also to support the administration. Didn't realize I was going to be sitting next to teachers, but I am, who really have to live with a lot, a lot of uncertainty as we try to figure this out. There, there are people who are taking this out on you, um, and for our staff and our teachers, it's, this system is taking it out on you. Um, so thank you for your work. Thank you for continuing to stick with the district through this. I know it changed the lives of my kids. Um, and I know it's changed the lives of a lot of kids. Um, and I just wanted to ask people to remember to how difficult these decisions are. We don't have in our, the state of Wisconsin, a way to do this other than through a referendum at this time. And this is a blunt instrument for a very precise and specific need. And y'all get to put one question on the ballot, and there's lots of different options. There's lots of different ways. There's lots of different factors. This is not the best way to fund public education. It's the way that we have to fund public education right now. And I have worked and will continue to work at the state level with, with our local elected leaders to find different resolutions to this problem. And so I appreciate everyone in the community coming together, being willing to come out and vote, being willing to speak up and be part of this. And I just ask that folks continue to be respectful, continue to support our district, and continue to understand it's not any of the people in this room, no matter what side you're on, that created this instrument that we have tonight in the form of a referendum. But it is the instrument that we have to be able to use. So, thank you, and I hope everyone finds respectful ways to, um, finish this up, and then it doesn't continue to divide our community in the way that it is. McFarland has a history of not always coming together when really hard decisions come forward, and it's a history that we need to change. When there's a hard decision, we need to put it on the ballot. We need to vote for it, or we need to take action, and we need to do it, and we need to find ways to come together and to move forward and not let those actions be something to divide us. So I hope that tonight, whatever question that you put on the ballot, and with a positive outcome that I hope for, but whatever outcome comes after the election, that our community stays unified and paying attention to and focused on what's really important, which is keeping a strong community, keeping respect for our neighbors, and building upon something that is really amazing here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melanie Roback. Welcome, Melanie.
No. Not texting. All right. Thank you for making this space for public comments. My name is Melanie Roback. I'm a McFarland parent of two. I've been in math education for over twenty years, not in McFarland. I participate in the district's referendum group. Um, I don't speak for that group now or the district or any group. I'm here to talk about retention as a tip-top priority in any of your decisions, including tonight's, a priority that's special to McFarland's situation. I also want to say that off the bat, we have exceptional leadership in our administration and school board here, whether or not I always agree. I'm always impressed by the level of thought and discussion, the meticulous level of fiscal responsibility behind the scenes, the painstaking efforts to listen, which is why I keep talking at you. Um, so thank you. And to be clear, since a lot of people might be watching, the situation we're in is about a cap on school funding that the state hasn't appropriately adjusted in over a decade. It's by no stretch of the imagination a matter of mismanaged school funds or carelessness or greed, and you can learn about that in all sorts of ways by now, the newspaper, the district website. Okay, so our exceptional staff and retention. I want to make the case that our retention, a stellar ninety-five percent, while retention is currently dropping in other districts locally and around the state. Uh, this is our secret sauce, for lack of a better word, so to speak. Um, I've really puzzled over this. We are ninth and tenth out of twelve in teacher pay in Dane County. We're second to last in per pu, per pupil funding, below average in admin salary and size, uh, for comparable nearby school districts, and yet, our district report card shows us as number two, the second best in the county. How is this possible? I think we have two things going on with our staff. One, we have deep institutional history. Our retirees, and we'll get this better than anyone. A lot of our staff have been here long-term, ten, uh, twenty, thirty-plus years. They have decades of professional development under their belt and collaboration with other staff. So the history and expertise isn't just stored in the individuals, but also in the deep spaces between them, a rich reserve of relationships, expertise, morale, camaraderie. It's like a family, and I would guess that that's a big part of why people love working here, um, this feeling of family. And like oil in the ground, it takes a long time to build this up and is extremely valuable. Uh, and the other thing that's going on for our staff, for those who don't have that long history, in the past five to ten years, it's become fiercely competitive to work here. Our more recent staff make up for the lack of long-term history by being extremely talented. They're the sort of teachers, leaders, people, um, who stood out among the rest and outcompeted for a job here. And, uh, this is a lucky combination and amazing staff. Our retention is our secret, even beyond the general truth that turnover is expensive and inefficient. Our retention is also vulnerable, both due to recent blows to morale, like the pandemic, failed referendum, recent cuts, but also because of skyrocketing mental health and special ed needs in all schools, and getting, and it's getting harder to stay in the classroom even under the best of conditions. Many of staff are hang, many of our staff are hanging on by a thread. We don't know how thick. They're getting ready to start a new school year with fewer resources, fewer hands on deck, and they have other options. So they'll see how this goes, but please know it's common in teachers' families for spouses to say, especially these days as teachers everywhere are getting squeezed. As soon as you decide it's too much and you want to do something with a little more balance and a little more pay, we support you. Um, or both, right? Or just say the word. Teachers hear this all the time, all the time, in their families. Because the extent to which teachers and absolutely administration too, give of their whole selves, it's really a sacrifice by the teacher's whole family. It really would be a mistake to take this for granted. Teachers are in it because they love it. But if they don't have what they need to be effective, it's not rewarding, and someone else can do that. So please take seriously the importance of stability of employment here and quality of teaching conditions. To me, that means a raise, no more fiscal cliffs, and not dealing with referendum stuff again for another four years. If our retention cracks, we'll be forced to compete to fill those positions, and the quality gap will be great. This is in your hands. Don't aid the national statewide efforts to defund public education. All of these options are less than what our schools need. April was what our schools need. Jeff Mahoney and Mr. T reminded us last week, and option three knocks out almost a quarter of the cost to, to taxpayers. Too much for too long, right? You've listened. And did you all catch it? Even with option three, we're drawing significantly from the fund balance. Option three is a. Option three is a minimum and it was the survey favorite at 40% community support. 65% support some kind of referendum. We're number two in the county for our district report card. For anyone who's counting, that's almost number one. With all due respect, let's please act like it, okay? Don't vote your fear and let's not lower our standards just to keeping the doors open. Trust us as a community to learn. Information is on your side. Staff members and families are hanging on to your decision, possibly waiting to inform their own. I appreciate your thought. Let's all give our teachers some love this fall, stock the lounges, and let's be sure all of our kids are at school on the third Friday in September. So that our funding cap matches our enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Okay, that concludes our public comments for this evening. We shifted a thing or two around, so it looks like our next discussion item is school board office hours. And either Erin or Megan can steer that.
Just a standing agenda item or just to check in, office hours that occurred between our last meeting and this meeting? And any thoughts to share? It's one of the, any, but we just kept it on our agenda.
Well, Craig and I really enjoyed our bonding session at the McFarland.
We know each other.
Like, we are tight now.
Okay.
Yeah.
You were lonely?
We had some great conversations with people that just passed through. But ultimately, I really enjoyed that relationship experience with you, Craig.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yay!
Maybe we should do a reminder of the ones coming up.
That would be fantastic!
So, we've got one coming up on Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Spartan Pizza. That will be check-in and Fisher. And then the next, we're kind of doing a big push on the 28th and 29th during School Photo Day. We're going to try to have one of us there during the whole time.
Yep.
And we've only scheduled one, but anyone who wants to join in for, you know, to have two board members there. I know Bruce, you said you could jump on whenever. And then, as part of that, at the end of the 29th, there's also the last music festival or music night at the cafe. Bruce and I are going to be there.
We had a very good one there.
Yeah.
Early on.
Yes. So, that I think it's, I think it's working really well to go where the people are. And that's from 6:00 to 8:00. A reminder that School Photo Day is 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on the 28th and 29th. So you can catch one of us there at some point. And then, we have the next ones, we're going to schedule after that. Tom, thank you for adding a lot of location suggestions. I think they're really, really good. And I'm wondering if logistically, if we have downtime while we're doing the one at Photo Day, we can chat about the schedule going forward and...
Yes, and I'm willing to make contact with those folks. I think office hours is an effective way of getting the word out. In my suggestion, we have the signs for the table.
Yep.
But I would suggest that we create a larger sign, so when people come into a space, they can see it. And I'm willing to pay for it. It's not very expensive. A sign that fits right in front of the table to the floor.
Be a good idea.
That says, "McFarland School Board Office Hours." So that may draw more people to our tables.
Is our, our target kind of one or two a week, sort of?
Uh, it's been about one a week.
And that's probably adequate moving forward, going forward to November.
I think so. I think so.
I think I sent you a list of like 27.
You did.
Locations.
Yeah.
Wow, I would like to take a look at that baby off.
They're really, no, they're really great suggestions.
I think, again, we want to go to the constituents. And any of those are constituents who are seniors here in, in, in McFarland. I think we still have to do an outreach somehow to our, the other municipalities. There's five other municipalities. So we probably can talk about that at a future time.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's great. I think it's, I think especially hitting a lot of those locations between now and November will be really important. And I'd still like to offer this after November.
Sure.
But maybe we, you know, we'll figure that out as we come to it. But that's great. Any other feedback about how it's going or new themes we're hearing?
Well, I was wondering, I talked with Erin and I mentioned you and Megan before the, the meeting here. I'm wondering if in some ways we couldn't have, again, something more similar to what we had after the, the community information group meeting together. And we met at the, in the Performing Arts Center. And I was thinking, again, as nice it is to be at these, the restaurants, I'm not sure, or, you know, wherever it is, the tavern. It doesn't matter. It just seems like, I think we would reach more people potentially. I think we'd be more effective if we actually had something here at the high school, again, like on a Sunday evening. I know that a lot of people were very much influenced by that meeting, those meetings. And I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to have something like that. I was thinking, perhaps, and maybe not possible end of August now, but maybe something beginning September or end of September and in October, and maybe even end of October as well, before the election. I just think those would be a chance to reach, you know, closer to 100 people. And I think it's something we could consider. And we can talk about that at our, our meeting, either Wednesday night or Thursday.
I do like the idea of having something here at the high school, because this is everyone's high school.
Yeah.
It gives them a chance to get into the building, see what we're all about and serve. I think it's equally important to go to them. So we just will reach a balance with that. I think once we have the referendum question down, then we have something really to talk to them about.
I totally agree with that.
Yep.
Totally agree with that.
Anything else? Okay, go ahead.
Is this open for discussion? Can I ask?
Sure.
Can, can I ask a question for out there?
No.
No, okay.
Good try, though.
No.
Good try.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
No, it doesn't. I understand.
It's a discussion for us, for you. You know, and I do think if people have ideas too, out in the public about how to make those more effective, to please let us know.
Totally. Great point.
Assuming that you do make a decision this evening about a referendum question, the engagement plan will be something that we'll be discussing and reviewing, whether that's through this type of a, you know, board member office hour setup or other opportunities. So, it'll be a comprehensive plan that differs greatly from what we experienced in the winter.
And I will say with the, the community festival coming up, we should really have a big push. It'll be very visible.
Do you know the dates, Stella?
I was just going to ask that.
Yes, it's the last weekend in September.
In September.
What are we calling that now?
The McFarland Community Festival.
You'd know the dates if you were one of the Kiss the Pig contestants.
I was there last year.
Where's it being held?
Down here by, Billy Tall Groves.
Okay.
Library.
Milwaukee.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure about Friday day, but certainly Saturday would be the most attended day. And then maybe Sunday. We do have the parade, so I don't know if we want to do something along the parade route.
Megan will be marching in the parade.
I want to kiss that pig, so...
You're going to have to get people to...
Hmm, maybe we should talk.
But the question is, does the pig want to kiss you?
I don't, consent is important.
Yeah, it's not that clear.
And it's a bigger pig than it was in years past.
Yeah, I have a little baby pig.
Okay, we'll put quotes around kiss. I just want to win, okay?
There you go.
I just want to snuggle.
Call that a win.
I'd be down to snuggle a pig, yeah.
Okay. If we have nothing further there, the district administrator's report is next. Mr. Tarnitzer, Laura is yours.
It's my privilege to share some information with you here about some recognitions, about some things that are going on. Sitting up straight today. The, so, this is that time of year where we get to host our auditors. So, they, our auditors, the auditors come in for three days annually. And they're onsite, they review information, do this field work. Really, the preparation starts in May with our, our business office team. They start collecting information, review the materials, so that the auditors have the information that they need when they, when they come, which was last week. Now, extending on, they continue, the auditors continue to monitor our work through the end of October and then produce a report, which I know the board has seen. So it's many, many hours of staff time. It's a great accountability measure. We always learned some things that we could improve on to make our, our process more efficient. A special recognition for Carrie Roberts, who just spends so much time getting ready for that. And the team that she leads, they just do a great job with the process. The auditors often comment about how prepared we are for their time, so. So kudos to them and look forward to sharing the, the report when it, it is done.
Can I add on to that?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if it's an official title, but I was kind of liaising with them and I forwarded their email to all of you. But, and Jeff informed me, just as a heads up to add on to that recognition, they, there are public audit firms that are dropping clients in school districts because of their lack of organization.
Yep.
Difficult to work with, not prepared. So, even though we don't have a report yet, it's already a great message that administration is so on top of it.
And they are extraordinarily thorough. They, they, they cross all their Ts and dot all their Is. As a matter of fact, at some point near the end of the process, I have a conversation with someone from there. If someone was going to commit fraud in your district, how do you think they'd do it? You know, those kind of questions that are...
Very thoughtful.
But I've seen the last 12 or 13 reports and Mr. Mahoney does a yeoman's job every year, year in and year out. They're very complimentary of our school district, each and every year.
And that, of course, is in addition to the audit work that's done at the state level through the Department of Public Instruction.
Different audits, yeah.
So that's wonderful news. We had our administrative team had our kickoff on the 6th and 7th. Great start to the year with them, a lot of great energy. I think that we've had some processes that have been in place for a few years now and that really helped us move, particularly, particularly our stage in the strategic plan has really helped provide some focus for that team. We also, on the 8th, had a restorative conferences training for administration and student services staff that was paid for through a mental health grant. So we talked about when and how to use restorative practices with a focus on restorative conferences. Because they're not, those situations are not, they're difficult, they're challenging. And restorative practices have been shown to be effective in the right situation. So when to use them, how to use them, how to maximize that. And shared a lot of expertise and experiences and lessons we've learned over, over time. Then, I just really wanted to give a shout out to everyone that's been involved in the problem solving for filling the vacancy left behind with Kelly Vetter's resignation and then not filling that position. Worked very closely with Corey Shefcek and Greg Nelson and Brooke Hauser on that. But especially the other staff, the student services teams at both buildings. And of course, our district coordinators, who will be involved in providing some support. So that's Brittany Brazel, Darian Riggins, and Angie Burnett, who have, you know, are excited about the opportunity to help in any way they can during this difficult time. Last, last week, we had our district school improvement meeting, so that was a reminder, we had that in June and then this was the August version. This is something the district used to do many years ago and we brought it back to provide consistency district-wide. The majority of time in August is spent with their building leadership teams. But these are all the district leadership teams from, from around the district. All these building leadership teams, excuse me, come together across the district, so. So, very powerful group of leaders that share their expertise. And I was amazed, I know they're impressive, but they were just tenacious and dug in to deep thinking and hard work. And just really, really impressed. And some laughter, too. That was, that was permitted at appropriate times. So they had a lot of fun, but also worked really hard, so. Work hard, play hard. The, also, last week, we had the open house with the bus company at Nelson's. And a few of us were able to go there and scoop some ice cream. It was well-attended, just a really fun event. They do such a great job hosting the families from McFarland and Manona Grove. So it was just a nice event and, and well-run by them. Glad to be able to be there. We also had a K-12 Equity Seminar that day, provided by our Community Impact Grant, also called the, sort of the Circles Grant in your mind. And brought in two outside experts to talk about equity and equity leadership and really what belonging looks like, feels like in our buildings. And it really challenged us to have some pretty uncomfortable conversations at times. The morning was spent with the administrative team, so we're very fortunate to have these two experts present to us. And then, in the afternoon was with district building equity leadership teams as well. So, really powerful day, looking, make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our learners and our commitment to educational equity. And of course, fall sports is underway here at the high school. You have tennis, you have golf, you have football, you have volleyball, you have girls' swimming, you have boys' soccer, you have cross country. And then, the middle school will start when school starts with volleyball, dance. Oh, I didn't mention dance, I don't think, for the high school. They've been going since June. Middle school, dance, volleyball, and cross country will start soon. So those are some of the things. I'm going to share the, just a few photos from around the district as the board members are thinking about any recognitions they want to share. And of course, you saw this probably on social media. We have our high school students mentoring our beginning and continuing strings players. So that, that cross-grade collaboration is something that really picked up last year. And this is another great example of something occurring during the summer, where our expert older students are showing off to help them. This was kind of fun during that leadership team day. Over the lunch hour, the Wabisa leadership team decided to give the new playground a test. So they were over there having fun. I just think it's a nice, nice photo to show that they wanted to test and make sure that this was good equipment.
Is that near finished now?
Yep, yep, yeah. We're, we'll be set for the first day of school. The inclusive park will be a couple of weeks after that, for that section of it. But the, but the school playground will be ready to go. So it's very exciting. The school garden, look at that! You know, really in full bloom. And that's, again, right, right out, out back here. High school, if you ever get a chance to see, maintained by our students. Camp kindergarten, I think it's, off the top of my head, I think it's 124 students. Nearly all incoming kindergarteners attended that session there. Went really well, so it's kind of fun to see them in action, practicing some of their routines and just feeling more comfortable getting ready to start the, the school year in a couple of weeks and some more. Summer school fun, taking advantage of outside, making some stuff. Those are my recognition. I have some upcoming events, but before I do that, do, do any board members have any recognitions they wish to share?
Yeah, I'd just like to share my appreciation for all the staff that showed up tonight and last week and the week before that in the community meetings that we had at the PAC. Your, your presence, especially during the summer months. You know, you're busy with, with family things. It shows that you deeply care and have a passion and are deeply committed to our school district, to help kids. So, thank you for doing that. And then I have a comment, Erin. You were talking about the administrative team had their kickoff. And fortunately, I don't think we had to hire any additional or any different administrators this year.
Correct, same team as last year.
So the parallel I will make is teaching staff. You know, depending on how the referendum turns out, if we have to shift teachers around, that... that or, you know, if, if, if teachers leave, that drastically impacts, uh, structure of a teaching team, a building team, uh, so it's really important that we realize it, that it's just as important that the community realizes that. That when, when, when we make a change, there's a whole ripple effect. Similar to, as parents, once our children leave the home, that has an impact on us. So again, we want to keep that in mind, that whenever there's a change, uh, there's gonna be consequences.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we have a 95% retention rate, okay? That's no guarantee. I know of districts, one just down the road here, uh, they've had a 75% turnover rate of their teaching staff over three years.
Wow.
Now, there's reasons for that, but I don't think those same reasons would ever come to McFarland, but it could be different reasons-
Yep.
-that would result in some type of turnover, so.
Don't want to take that for granted.
Don't take anything for granted and continually, continually show our teaching staff and support staff our appreciation.
Couldn't agree more.
Other, uh, just coming up, some stuff coming up. Uh, we have the new staff orientation. We have a, a, a small but very talented group of new staff that will be joining us this Thursday. And then next week, staff come back formally, officially on Monday. So I'll have a return. We're actually bringing back the curriculum council structure. That will occur on that Monday and then they'll be followed by a welcome back, a short welcome back. You are certainly invited to as board members at 11 o'clock on Monday. Picture days, as was mentioned, 28th and 29th. The 28th is the high school welcome back night, the 29th is the K-8 welcome back night and then, uh, we hit September, which is attendance awareness month, that's pretty appropriate. And also suicide prevention month.
Oh.
It is, yes, I don't know, um, but it is. And then September, uh, brings us no school on the second. But then on the third, we get going. Uh, now reminder, we have kindergarten through seventh grade or through, through, excuse me, through sixth grade and ninth grade through 12th grade. So seventh and eighth grade, 4K early childhood, don't start that first day. Now, the seventh and eighth grades still allow our sixth graders a day in the building by themselves. Seventh and eighth grade, they'll start the second day, that, the third, uh, or the fourth, excuse me. And then we have the 10th is our first day for early childhood and, um, so that will be exciting too and that will be, everybody will be in by the 10th. Of course, you have September 11th coming up, the 9/11 remembrance day. And then September 15th starts National Hispanic Heritage Month. Then we will get to be together officially for another school board meeting on September 16th, so we have a little bit of time away. I know we have a work session coming up, uh, but besides that, you're gonna unfortunately get a break from board meetings. But on that day, we will also celebrate Mildred Fish Harnack Day, which is a day that we get to celebrate in the state of Wisconsin.
Who is that?
Her state statue.
She was killed by the Nazis.
Oh, that's so sad.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so there you go. Those are all the things I have to share. That concludes my report.
I would like to throw out one little shout out.
Please do.
Friday nights, the varsity football team is playing a very fun game at Bree Stevens Field-
Oh, I saw that.
-against Edgewood, we've never played there before. So anybody who knows me, I'm like the biggest McFarland football fan.
Yes, indeed.
Um, you can probably hear me from anywhere in McFarland yelling, but either way, it could be really fun to come out and support our kids.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock!
This Friday.
This Friday. There might be some parents at Vintage Brewing Company across the street having some food at five, just putting it out there, more the merrier.
That's a nice place.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Cool.
That's exciting.
Go Spartans!
Woo!
And I would say there's plenty of street parking around Bree Stevens.
Yes, yeah.
It's not bad.
It's such a cool field too and I love the fa- and we're playing Edgewood, so you know, it's a little competitive.
Yes.
But yeah, had to throw that out there.
Thanks for the plug.
You're welcome.
Anybody have anything else? If not, we will move along. Uh, we have discussion and possible action on approval and/or modification of a resolution to exceed the revenue limit and calling an operational referendum election to maintain programming.
Sorry. No, sorry.
Excuse me?
I was gonna be like, da, 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 da.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So, um, do we need a motion before we do discussion or can we just go right into discussion?
Is it listed as discussion and possible action?
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, then we can just discuss.
So I'll start.
Can I share just a little bit of something?
No.
Sorry, I just want to orient the board to what they, what I've made it up-
We have to do.
And then I'll turn it to you.
Yeah.
Um, so you have three pieces of paper in front of you, um, and the first one is a referendum options, a, a table that you'll see. So at our last meeting, you identified three possible options, which was survey option two, three-year recurring, survey option three, three-year recurring, survey option two, four-year non-recurring for consideration tonight. And I also included the, a chart of how that would compare with the five-year recurring that was on the ballot in April.
Thank you much for this.
Yes. And then you will also see, the next two pieces of paper are just the number charts broken down for each of the different options, uh, you know, so you can see what the tax impact would be for the different options. And I think that might just be something you referenced during your, your discussion, but I just want to make sure you had those, so as you discuss, you may want to refer to those. The, uh, the chart is just a different, you know, visual for what is on our website already in terms of these, these charts. And then the table was something that was emailed out to all staff and families. I didn't have the, the five-year recurring on it, that was something that I added today for your purposes. I can just, I think I can, I'm still on, I could just show you so that the, the people that are watching online can see. So this is what I'm referring to, so, so many families and staff will have seen these first three, um, things and then the five-year recurring from April is what I added. So you can see the difference, I had, tried to highlight some of the differences in terms of, you know, how, how the three things, uh, well, the four things differ. So I just wanted to orient you to what you have in front of you and that's all.
Okay, so do any of the board members have any questions regarding the handout that we got from Erin? And if not, I am going to go around the room again and have each of you talk a bit about your feelings on these different options for the evening. And once we get around the room, we'll see what we can do about getting a consensus. So if you have no more questions for Erin, um-
I was gonna just make one request, but I saw you just left.
I can go back on.
I was gonna ask if you could leave this up on there-
I can.
-for either people watching online-
This one?
Or, yeah, to leave that chart up there for the people in the room, just so that as we're talking about it, they can-
Good idea.
-see it.
I think so. Uh, who would like to start? Okay, Megan Fessler, you go right ahead.
I'd like to go near the last.
Okay, I'll let you go near the last.
I, I presume you'll go last, so.
That sounds like getting voluntold, um.
You went first.
Um, okay, so it was really good to have Thursday's meeting and reflection and comments come in based on that discussion and then have more comments today, both written in person. I had off work today and I totally stress cleaned my house, which also it's like a moving meditation for me, um, which was really-
Whatever works.
And I, I'm still, uh, in support of either option number two or number three, three-year recurring. I think, um, I know there's been discussion about non-recurring and I know that there's some feedback that, that we've all heard, um, that people don't feel like there's enough support and I recognize and acknowledge that. I think our survey results, even though they're a bit outdated, they're all based on recurring options. And so, um, and there is support for that, um, based on the data from June. And I think the other thing, and I personally would push for the option three, three-year recurring, um, it's scary, but I think the difference between option two and option three for the taxpayer provides so much more value, um, without making a huge ask. And I think that's important and I think the biggest thing is that we have support, um, from Spartan Forward, from the, um, from MFT. I, I think it's an option that we can, that we can do. We can work hard, um, and to really inform people and I think I would be happy with either option, but I really like option three. I think we can do it. And I think it has listened to people, it's shorter, it's less money, we've made cuts, like I think, I think that's important and I think we can do it.
Okay.
Next.
Bruce?
All right, um, yeah, I'm just starting with, I, I just want everyone to know that I, I wore this when I went to that community engagement committee the first time, is I won't put it on 'cause it's a kind of really beat up, but says, "Think team, help each other." And it's something, as a, as a coach, I try to drill into my kids' head and I think it's very much what Carolyn talked about as well, that is, we gotta, we all gotta work together. I taught here for 37 years, um, I've been on the school board for three and a half years, so over 40 years of my life has been kind of devoted to this community. And, um, I love this community, I also feel like I know this community really well. And so I think it's important that in some ways, more than anything, I want us to try to keep together and really think about that. I got asked by a former student to get on the school board because I felt, or he had heard, uh, from a number of people that the staff, or the school board was not working well together. And I think if there's anything I've tried to do in three and a half years is to try to keep us together. Um, I think it's so important, um, when you, when you start to break apart, you end up having various factions in the community start going and working to kind of stir up trouble, as it were. And I think it's important, um, to keep that in mind, that we gotta stick together. And I am going to tell you that I'm gonna live by this shirt, which is if we decide one thing or the other, even if it's not what I necessarily agree with, um, I'm gonna be a team player and I think it's important, we gotta keep that going. As a teacher and a coach, I always try to have an objective, okay, what's my goal? What do I want to try to accomplish with my team or with my class? What does I want them to learn? And, um, I always then try to figure out, okay, once I have that in my mind, my lessons, my workouts, whatever, would always be to try to get to that point. And, um, I, I finally came to the conclusion that my, my objectives are number one, to pass a referendum and I've heard from a number of people saying it like I'm scared. That's a, a warning in and of itself, if there's a fear, and my, my greatest fear is that we don't pass something, um, it will destroy, I think, this community or at least set it back a long time. So number one, to pass a referendum, that keeps our schools top-notch. Now, top-notch doesn't mean we have to be number one, I can live with being number two. I can even live with being maybe top three or four, whatever, but I do not want to be mediocre. My father used to always say, "Don't ever strive for being mediocre, it's easy to do that, you don't have to do anything at all." And that just isn't the way I, I'm gonna operate, so I want to keep us top-notch. And then my second objective is, we gotta pass a referendum that is fiscally responsible. It has to be fiscally responsible. I really, at this point, I, I want to try again, stress to everyone in this, this room and to the whole community, both those objectives benefit everyone in this community, everyone. Keeping our schools, number one, even if you don't have children here, is gonna keep the value of property up, it's gonna do all kinds of things that's gonna just make our community a better place to live. And obviously, if you have children here, it is absolutely just essential that they get the best education they can. And then the fiscal responsibility is also important and I'm finding that again, it's the one thing that, you know, can so easily divide people. My fear is, I think I'm so, I just want to tell the Spartan Forward people how proud I am for the time and the effort that they've already put into it. Part of my goal is to see you guys not do a damn thing. If it works well, we should all come together. Because my fear is that you can also have another group that will just as likely do everything they can in their power and will have on social media Armageddon and I just don't want to have that happen. I, I just think, let's avoid it. I think we can find that, that sweet spot, as it were. So anyway, I want to end the zero-sum games. My wife always said, "Don't burn bridges." And I know there's times it feels really good, you just really want to burn that bridge, but man, don't do it. There's times you're gonna need that. I could really bore you, but I, and maybe I will. Aesop's Fable? Aesop's Fable, sorry, it could be Aesop's Fable, about the lion and the mouse, right? You all know that. I mean, how could a mouse possibly help a lion out? And there's that tendency to say, "We can win this thing, we can win this thing," or do whatever and you just, like, who cares about these people? I was joking with a friend today, I said, you know, Ben Franklin talked about, there's, you know, the things that are, you know, gonna happen to everybody, death and taxes. And I said, "If you're on the school board, it's gonna be referendums," or referendum. And they're inevitable. And so inevitably, you're gonna be coming back to the neighbor who you burned that bridge with and you're gonna need to work with that person. And those are your neighbors, that's the next point. These are your neighbors. So before you start just getting really kind of worked up, keep remembering that. And then what my father always said, "Always take the long view." I think I would have been a more successful coach had he not done that. In other words, let's push that kid to the max, there's always the risk of getting injured, burned out, whatever, but I don't think it's in their best interest. Take the long view, that there's a long career ahead of you. And for us, there's many years ahead of us and we've got to keep that in mind. So, we are all in this together. I'm in favor of option number two. I'm also in favor of a three-year recurring referendum. The option number two, I tend to favor because I was involved in that community, uh, community engagement group and I heard loud and clear from some of the people. In fact, it was many of those people who were nov- in the community and, and said they were, they said, "In some ways, I can understand this, I think it's, it's, it makes more sense than that old option number one." And I think number two is something we can live with. One thing it does, it stops further cuts. I don't think we can have the cuts. I personally, and this is kind of irrelevant, but I'm gonna say it again, I'm not in favor of not replacing, um, our assistant associate principal at, at, uh, Wabisa Intermediate School. I think it puts an awful stress on our principal there, Corey, and on Greg, and certainly on our associate principal, okay? Why am I forgetting her name?
Brooke Hauser.
Brooke, thank you. Erin had to tell me this again, so forgive me, you guys. But Brooke Hauser, you guys, it puts a tremendous stress on her and at the same time, it puts a tremendous stress on our staff. If I'm a teacher and I have 20 students and I have one student having a meltdown, now I loved all my students, I was the luckiest person in the world, I don't remember bad times, but I need an administrator or someone to help me with that kid so my other 19 can go on. It's absolutely essential that those administrators be there. So one of the things I like about option number two is it stops those cuts. We've got to start thinking in terms- We've got to start thinking in terms of that. I know the pay, the difference between really option two and option three is that one percentage point. And I, I recognize how hard you guys work. I was there, I lived that. I also think we can live with it at least short-term. And I think that can be the case if we go with the thing that makes me most worried. Because this isn't something that we really brought up a lot in that community engagement group, and that was reoccurring. Everyone seems to be, and I was one of those people, one of those people who really believed that maybe non-recurring is the way to go. Because it's cheaper and it's more likely to pass. It is cheaper in the short-term. It is cheaper in the short-term. Because technically then, we don't have to worry about people's taxes going up, we're just gonna borrow this money. But it's disingenuous to say that. Because in the long-term, and this is taking that long view, it's gonna cost a lot more. Because you're gonna go from one fiscal cliff to another fiscal cliff, to another fiscal cliff. And for us to go out and say, "Well, let's do that because it's gonna pass," I think that is where we all have to become teachers. And we have to tell the public why it is important that we do a recurring one. The only way we can raise, the only way we can raise that budgetary uh, what's the word I'm looking for, the-
Revenue cap.
Thank you. Getting, I'm close to seventy-three, so you have to forgive me here. But the one way you're gonna, we can raise our revenue cap is we have to do that. And I try to wrap my head around that. As a, as a historian, I always try to think like, what made them pass that? The state legislature? And I understand it now. They're saying, in effect, to a, to a school district, "We want you guys to have some skin in the game. If you feel that your budget cannot be met as it current, as it's currently being run, then we want you to bump up your revenue cap. We will, the state, will give you more money, and you'll do that." But that in turn means that the people in the community have agreed they're gonna raise their taxes. And so in a sense, I understand where that comes from, but it's frightening the people. What gives me hope in all this is though that is, there's been no change in how we're gonna be funding our schools. Our state legislature has gone out of its way to try to find ways to cut people's property taxes. And if, I, I asked Aaron today if it's possible, I don't know if you have a slide, maybe didn't bring it. But you can see, over the past ten years, the amount of money that we're actually paying for our schools has been steadily decreasing. That is the state saying, "Okay, more and more of these schools are passing this, these, these recurring referendums, and their property tax going up, and they're complaining about it, we will help them out." My feeling is, again, if we can show the people, the taxpayers, that a reoccurring ultimately in the long-term is gonna cost us less, because we probably won't have to go to referendum as often, and certainly won't have to ask as much, then I think there is a, a real chance that we can get this thing passed. And I, I'm hoping that in the end, more than anything, we can kind of come together and, and look at this as something that is benefiting, benefiting the entire community. So, again, my long answer there was just simply number, option number two, three-year occurring. Reoccurring, sorry.
Thanks very much, Bruce.
There's that, and there's a mil rate chart that you um were referencing, that's the last five years. And then in addition to that, people's actual tax dollars. So even as, even with the value of properties increasing, which, which also decreases the mil rate, it's important to note, people's actual tax bill, when they look at that, we'll see. And so there's an example that we had previously provided with a twelve percent actual dollar decrease on people's school portion of their taxes. You know, and that's one of those things that I think is, it's just hard, you, you bring it up, but people didn't feel, feel it. But it's true, you know, it's there for most people unless they made significant improvements to their home. That results in a different-
Craig, could I just mention two other things that, and, and I know I talk so much here? One is, I mentioned in the last one about being hopeful with this next election in November for the state legislature. And I think I want to change that, and better way to say it, and I don't think anyone's gonna be able to argue with me. This will be the, the best chance to make meaningful change to the way we fund our public education in over fifteen years. I can't say I have hope with that, because one of my, a couple of you guys were saying, "Well, you can't build a, you know, a structure on hope." But the truth of the matter is, it is our best chance. And then, again, I'm gonna give kudos to Carolyn Clow for coming here. I want people to realize that our village has made a real effort to listen to the taxpayers. And I was talking to, again, my friends, saying that it shows me that democracy does work, that I think we can come together. And I think it's, it, it's, it's a, in some ways, a thankless job. It's a wonderful job. I really enjoy doing this, but it's, it's difficult. And for, for the village to say, "We're gonna put a pause on this stuff," that's the idea that we're all in this together. And then perhaps the last point is, we don't have a big business district, we don't have a big commercial center in our, in our village. So you immediately start thinking of, you know, Wanakee or Verona or Middleton. But we have something that no other community has, or at least not that I know around here. We have Weaver. And it's relatively small, but it's growing. Tom, you talked about it the other day, it's growing. It's a million dollars, over a million dollars a year. And that's something that's gonna always be there. We need help now. And again, with this reoccurring referendum, I think we can do it. But I think Weaver is something that is only gonna keep growing. So I say that, and again, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Megan?
Whew, okay. Feel like I should have taken like a Xanax or something. Okay, so I'm gonna try to keep this brief. So, and, and I'm kind of gonna go through my thought process, so I apologize if I'm a little overplace. So, my choice is option number two, four-year, non-recurring. And this is why. We have to pass the referendum. If we don't pass the referendum, thirty-five positions will be cut. So I want to talk about the financial aspects of those thirty-five positions being cut. So we cut thirty-five positions, and let's say over the course of the next couple of years, we hire twenty of them back. The cost of hiring each one of those positions is one and a half times the cost of their compensation package. So let's just say, I'm gonna throw a number out there, fifty thousand dollars. If we hire back twenty teachers at fifty thousand dollars, that's a million dollars. But the cost to the district is one point five million. So I just want to kind of throw that out there, okay? So when we compare option number two to option number three, I feel it's critical to the district that we work to help cut some of our fixed costs that will help bring us to the benefits of option number three while keeping the cost at option number two. I have gone through the expenses, I've gone through the revenue, and I definitely think there are places that we can make some cuts as well increasing our revenues to bring us to that option three level while having option two cost to the taxpayers. I would love a recurring referendum. There is nothing I would like more. However, just to tell you a little bit about myself, when I moved to McFarland seven years ago, I was divorced, I was a single mom with two kids, and I know what it's like to struggle. It is hard. I'm gonna try really hard not to cry. And I think we need to listen to the people that are going to struggle with this additional cost. A lot of the feedback we got, I got during, when I was campaigning, we got it from people talking just out in the village, was that they didn't know about the referendum. And when they went to vote in April, they didn't know what to do. So they voted no. And we all know that the referendum failed sixty to forty percent. As we look at the November date, we're gonna have significantly higher voter turnout. So I just want to keep that in mind as well. If we listen to all the people that said yes in the survey, I have concerns about the people that didn't answer the survey or didn't know the difference between recurring and non-recurring. And my fear is, is that, and I've seen chatter on social media, I've seen conversations from people where they say they have problems saying yes when there is no final date to that change, if that makes sense. So with that recurring figure, it's going to keep coming year after year. Non-recurring, it would stop after four years. With this four-year plan, we will have a better gauge of what's going on with the state legislature. We all know that there has been redistricting. And over the course of the next two to three years, we will have a really good gauge of what our state legislature looks like. And we will have a better understanding, in my opinion, on what public funding, or what public education funding will look like. Once we have those details, as a board and a district, we can come up with a plan on how to address that fiscal cliff at the end of four years, which will also correlate to the next presidential election. My biggest fear is that the referendum will not pass. And that is why, I, I, seriously, I would love to have a recurring referendum, because I feel long-term financial stability is crucial for our district. But long-term financial capability isn't gonna matter if we don't pass something. And I think if we all dig in together, the district, looking at our expenses and our revenue, I think we can come up with a lower cost to the taxpayer, make sure that we can retain our amazing staff, we can compensate them accordingly like option three stipulates, but it doesn't put that significant burden on the taxpayer. Mic drop. Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Tom?
My position has not changed over the past week. As I mentioned last week, I strongly support option three, the three-year recurring referendum. To me, it's the minimal. I know there's a fear that it will not pass. I'm looking at the other side of everything that we are doing now, things that we failed to do prior to April. And, you know, as a board member and as a taxpayer, as a former educator, I feel it's my obligation to support the needs of the students here in McFarland, regardless of what it takes. We, you know, we all are advocates for kids, you know? And this is one way that we can further demonstrate that, by moving forward with a option three, three-year recurring referendum. I think um it started like when I was growing up. Family of eleven kids, we all went to parochial schools in Madison. My parents had to pay tuition. We were poor. My parents never complained that they paid tuition plus property tax. Because they knew that even though they didn't have kids in public schools, our neighbors did, other relatives did. And they felt it was their responsibility as a member of the community, the neighborhood, to help support all kids, regardless of where they go to school. I think as far, you know, Bruce brought, brought the fact about the assistant principal, I do disagree with Bruce. I think that's one way that we demonstrated that we have cut some costs here in the district. It wasn't that long ago that K-two and three-five just had one principal in each building. Since then, we've added student services and other support staff to help support teachers and support kids. But that's neither here nor there right now. Weaver, that is an unknown entity. You know, it's, I think we're gonna sign a three or five-year contract now. But they could drop enrollment. If they drop enrollment, then our, the, the, the money that we receive will go down, but that's very unlikely, because they anticipate the enrollment will, will again increase this year up to maybe seventy-five hundred students in the near future. Now, that covers Weaver here and their connect program up by Green Bay. So again, you know, I just have a difficult time not supporting our kids. And supporting our kids means supporting teachers. We, we aren't, you know, we don't have fluff out there to begin with. I know, because I've lived in the schools long-term. And I can faithfully say that as a district, we have been very fiscally responsible to the community, historically speaking. And I see no reason to change the direction of that ship at this point. And there's a lot of new things going on, getting the word out, the engagement groups. You know, so I think the level of understanding is far greater now. Though that might not change anyone's mind, but at least we have dealt that piece. You know, what was this? We, we've already addressed the piece. You know, it's too long. You know, we've already, again, my preference is to cut it back to three years. And then the other component was, it was too much. Not how much we've cut already. You know? And our overall budget isn't that large. We've already cut one point two million dollars. Any further cuts will drastically impact what students do here, the student success that students demonstrate to us, and how students exit this high school. We must provide the opportunities, the challenges, everything else that we're doing now. Now is not the time to stop going backwards or decreasing what we're doing. We should be increasing. The world is changing, and I think McFarland School District has done a good job at making those adaptations. But if we go backwards, a lot of those gains are lost, at the expense of students. And again, I have a hard time saying no to students. And that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. It's been a difficult last few days, for sure, just kind of mulling all of this data over. Kind of waffling back and forth between do we recommend what we feel is necessary in order to at least stay the same? Or do we pass something that we have reasonable confidence that it will pass? Because if anyone thinks what we've gone through so far has been difficult and messy, you haven't seen anything yet. If, if we don't put a question out there that will pass, I, I, I shudder to think the impact that that will have on everyone. Parents, students, staff, administration. To even consider cutting upwards to forty staff positions is almost incomprehensible. A lot of the things that we're considering now have been almost incomprehensible to me up until now. I have more history here in McFarland than most. I've seen all of the additions, seen all of the referendums, watched all of these students pass through these halls, and has been nothing but a source of pride. Pride in the community that has always stepped up to the plate. Pride in the, in the teaching staff for staying here when they aren't necessarily making as much money as they could, because they like the stability of our district. And I'm sure part of it is the relationship between the teachers and the teachers' union and the administration and the board. It's special. It's different. I go to conventions, school board conventions, people all around the country. And honestly, there are few, if any, that does business the way we do, with amicable relationships between the union and the administration and the board. with amicable relationships between the union and the administration and the board. There has not been a whole lot of strife over the years. And our, our, our staff has chosen the typical staff for teachers in the past. I'll take benefits at a loss of wages. So our, our teachers have never been anywhere near the top in our area in compensation package. And that's been okay. It's been okay because of the way that we do business. We don't have, there's at least three administrative positions that we have consciously not filled over the years. So we, we, in the administrative side, are kind of used to doing multiple jobs at the same time. So, this is hard. I don't want to see us sacrifice any of the things that our staff and students need. That's not realistic. There are going to be, there are going to be consequences regardless of which option we take to the community. None of it matters if that referendum doesn't pass. And the referendum failed by a bunch. You know, it's not, it's not like we have to change the minds of 50 people. We need to change the minds of 500 people. I think we've done a great job between April and now in education. I think the general public is much better informed now about referendums in general and ours specifically. I'm still not sure if the ramifications of another failure have really sunk in. short answer long, I would support Option Two, three-year recurring. I think we can pass it. The scary part of nonrecurring, to me, is the, and I would classify it as likelihood, that we will face another fiscal cliff of $7 million at the end of that four years. And we've talked about the fiscal responsibility or irresponsibility of recurring versus nonrecurring. Honestly, unless this passes, it doesn't matter. So, I would, I would love to do a Option Three, three-year recurring. I am just afraid that that might be too close to what we brought forth in April now. Understanding that we still have a couple of months here, and we can do a lot of work. But it would, it would certainly, I think to pass any referendum, it's going to take a lot of work. Everybody's going to need to pitch in. And I think it will be critically important that whatever option, question we bring forward, the people that are supporting, the public education and our staff and administrators, regardless of what it is specifically that they would have liked, we all need to be on the same team. It isn't going to be, whatever we come up with tonight, there are going to be satisfied folks and there's going to be dissatisfied. We saw all that when we got our way through COVID. But we got our way through COVID. We worked together and it got done. It was a remarkable thing to see if you were on the inside of that. I don't feel that we can count on the legislature to, to keep their word, to make the kind of increases that they had suggested are possible. And it would be wonderful if those do come true. Then, then we can, we can rethink some things. And I, and I also feel like I, I want to kind of agree that as beat up as the village board has been the last couple of months, I truly think it's remarkable that our village board invited those folks in, knowing full well what that meeting was going to be like. And that is difficult. That's hard to do. And it's hard to sit and listen to personal attacks when you're sitting up front, trying to do what's best for our populace, just as we're trying to do what's best for our students. We have developed a much, much closer relationship between our two boards. We're meeting at least monthly now. And I think transparency has improved to the degree that you can, you can almost have information overload over a period of time. So, what we've got at this point is, one, two, three. Three for Option Two, and two for Option Three. Three-year recurring, three-year recurring, three-year recurring. And we have, so, four, three-year recurring. And we have one, four-year nonrecurring. So, what I would like to see us do is make one more round here and see if we can reach consensus on which option. If, if Megan Fessler and Tom, who are on Option Three, Megan, you mentioned that you could move to Two. Tom, you mentioned that you would prefer not to move to Two.
That's correct.
Yeah. And Megan, you like, Megan Chapman, you like the four-year nonrecurring. Let's go around and talk about that piece of it. The four-year nonrecurring. Is that, is that something we want to stick with? Or is that something that we can change to a non, nonrecurring? You can go last.
To recurring.
Yeah, to a recurring, I'm sorry. Why don't you start, Bruce?
Well, I, I, when I look at the numbers, I think if you're going to try to tie it into a presidential election, then you need a five-year. Am I correct on that?
No.
No, because we're in year one, so.
We're in year one.
Yep.
So this is the presidential year, we're in year one.
Okay. In year one, isn't that '24, '25?
Mm-hmm. So that's this year.
Okay, so then '25, '26 is two. '26, '27 is three. '24 is '27, '28? But the presidential election, I believe, is '28, '29?
Twenty-eight, right.
I, I've written it out, I think it's going to be five years.
Oh, like that would be in?
If that's, if that's how it goes.
Yep.
I just, anyway, look at it, I just, you gotta, people have to understand, you're getting money and you're going to pay for this. It temporarily raises your, you know, revenue limit. But the truth of the matter is, as soon as that referendum is done, you don't go back to where you are. You go back to where you started from. And now if you, so, you know, you jump up, and now you want to get to here. When this runs out, you don't start here, you start here. And now, look at the size that you have to go up to that next level. And I, I can't imagine the mood of the, the populace is going to suddenly say, "Okay, we're in favor of that." Short-term, it's, it sounds great, because it does end. At that point, you're back to that revenue limit you were at. I, I just think we need to educate the public and say, "Look, you're going to have to count on this going up." Again, I think the state has been much more willing to spend money to cut people's property taxes than to increase funding for the, the schools. So I, I kind of feel like, in, in some ways, I, I just think the reoccurring referendum, it, it makes much more sense. But it's, it's like the old saying, you got to spend the nickel to save a dime. And ultimately, you will. And you just have to understand that.
So, you, you remain Option Two, three-year recurring?
Yeah, I'm for the three-year recurring. I would not go longer than three years.
Okay. Megan, F?
Yeah. So with regards to the recurring, nonrecurring, I was definitely nonrecurring like two weeks ago. That, like, that was what was going to have to happen to pass something. I think there's a couple of things to consider. I think coming back in four years, or timing it so that we have a presidential.
Because the presidential election would happen after the referendum period ends.
Right. So, I think that if we did nonrecurring, I agree, we have to time out the presidential election. Okay. I also think that coming back to people in four years and effectively probably having to do all of this community education again, because of turnover in the community, because people have busy lives, they don't stay up to date on what's happening on a day-to-day basis with the village or the school board, I think a lot of the same efforts we're doing right now, we're going to have to repeat. And I think that's equally as irresponsible of a choice to choose to spend our school resources that way. And I only, and I say that because I now feel like we have support for a recurring referendum. If I didn't feel like we had the support and the, and the ability to pass one like that, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be saying that. Because, as everyone has said, we need to pass a referendum. And that, and that has to be the bottom line. So I think it's going to be really hard to come back and ask people for more money in four years. I think the same people that might be advocated, like, it's just not going to be the same exact makeup of the community. And there will have to be a lot of more reeducation, knowing that we're going to be working on our community education on an ongoing basis more and more now. I mean, we've all committed to that, so. Also, the referendum engagement group acknowledging that they didn't have anything that was unanimous, they gave a recurring option and a nonrecurring option. So, they feel like there's support for both, too. There was one email that we got from someone who's in the industry for helping Wisconsin school districts pass referendum. And this person said that there are four components of a campaign that can pass. A community-led yes committee, check, we've got it. Support and involvement by the McFarland Federation of Teachers, which can include support from other union members at the state level, check, from what I've heard. A targeted list of voters likely to vote yes, which we can get from the union, and the right message. I think we have all of that. And the difference between the Option Two and Three, if we can do enough education with taxpayers, it's $27. It's $27 a year between Options Two and Three. Like I said, I'm, whatever we decide tonight, hands down, 100% support it. We make a decision as a team, and I will back it, and I will go to bat. But I think we have the support to do recurring. My fear is that coming back in four years is going to be really, really hard. And that's the even bigger fiscal cliff. And note, too, that when we, what we asked for in April, based on the assumption of the $400,000 property, $2,280 at the end of the five years, and then, and recurring, the highest option that we're considering now is almost $1,000 less than that for taxpayers. And that's depending on what state aid does. That's, that's, that's a huge difference. It's a huge difference. I, I mean, I, I, that's, two weeks ago, nonrecurring is what I thought we had to do to get passed. Now, I am more fearful of nonrecurring for what it might mean that we have to do in the future. And I think we can get a recurring one passed.
Okay.
Done.
Megan, C?
So my big thing on the nonrecurring versus recurring, we talk a lot about the survey. We talk a lot about the referendum engagement committee. And a lot of our conversations have been based on the survey data. We did not ask the question of would you be willing to support a nonrecurring over recurring? And that's a big key piece of information that I think we're missing. I, I want to go on record saying I am supporting, I, I am in support of a recurring referendum. I think it's extremely important to have long-term financial capabilities. But I also am hearing the voice of all the people that potentially didn't fill out the survey, or that are saying, "I can't support a recurring because I don't see an endpoint." And that is so fearful to me. I am not the person who's going to think that I'm going to change all y'all's minds. You know, like, I'm a one-team, one-dream kind of person. And if we decide to go three-year recurring, you can bet your happy selves that I will be at events, I will be knocking on doors, I will be whooping it up, talking about this referendum to get people to say yes. But as we look at the loss of April, as we look at the percentage of voter turnout we had in April versus the percentage of voter turnout we're going to have in November, we had, what, 40% voter turnout, I think, in November? And we're looking at having 96% voter turnout in November. That is a lot of voices. And there are a lot of people that are yelling nonrecurring. So, I have so much faith in Spartan Forward. I have so much faith in MFT. The woman who sent that email is actually my neighbor, and I know what she's all about. So I do feel that if we bust our butts for a three-year recurring, I want to believe that we will get that 51% and higher vote that we need come November. But that being said, I'm going to ask everybody who wants recurring to be an ambassador for the school district and the school board, tell all your friends why recurring is, is critical, why we need to keep our schools going. If you don't have kids, walk down the street and talk to a neighbor that has kids. If you have questions about the community aspect of our school district, go to any event, whether it's high school sports, a play, Band-A-rama. Band-A-rama is great. You get to see all these little kids playing instruments with high school kids. Because McFarland School District, like Carolyn said at one of the community listening sessions, we are special, but special takes money. So, I, I will say, if everyone on the, and I'm, and I'm truly doing this for, obviously, time as well. If everyone is in agreement that number two, recurring for three years, is what you feel the board should do, my only ask for the district is that we dig in deep financially to see if we can get to that Option Three salary piece for our staff. Because when it comes to cutting budgets, man, I do it for my job. It's super fun. I get up my highlighter and I just go to town. And I think we can do that as well. And I said y'all a lot, I'm sorry.
Cool.
I've had caffeine.
No, that's all right. We got it. Tom?
Yeah, I, I've always been a supporter of the recurring.
I've always been a supporter of the recurring referendum. Because we all know that the only way we can achieve some of our goals and our mission being the needs of every learner every day, and our vision of an equitable, inclusive community committed to student belonging, achievement, and growth can only be done through a recurring referendum. Like I said earlier, anything less, we're going to be going backwards.
Three years, correct?
Yes, I'm still supporting that. But with that said, I'm one of five team members here. And if I'm a minority, you know, I certainly will support whatever the majority wants to go with, knowing that I do it reluctantly, that I don't think that's the best use of our time and talent. I do have faith in everything that's going on. You know, I think it's just remarkable, the PR work that's going on, the connections, the relationships being established, and the level of understanding. But I understand the fear factor, because that's what it is. We are going to make a decision on a fear factor. That's not the best way to make a decision. I think we should be taking, making decisions on what the future looks like. What is the potential out there? So again, recurring would be my top priority.
I hear everyone. And I keep coming back to what if, what if the November referendum fails? And the consequences of that? I don't think anything that we've spoken of to this point can change the fact that we can know everything we know about what it takes to run a school district. We know how critically important it is to at least be in the ballpark compensation-wise for everyone, the staff, whether it be professional or support, and administration. McFarland is, I might even say woefully, behind on all counts. I know that, that the professional staff, Employment Relations Committee talked a lot about just getting our starting salary into the neighborhood of our competitors so that we don't lose them right from the get. So we, we, we need, at this point in time, maybe have to be satisfied with just being close to the average. Because that seemed like regardless of what question we put out there, we aren't going to be able to catch up and surpass any of our competitors in the area compensation-wise. Now, if over the course of the next three or four years, we do see significant changes, whether it be the different district lines or whether it be the majority in the House or Senate, if changes are made that impact us in a positive way, we can always account for that. This is a district that doesn't tax to the max. We only tax on funds that we use. So it hurts that we can't do better by our teachers. It hurts that we have to freeze or give little or no raises to our administration. Because I, I've personally been in the middle of it long enough now to know that just how hard all these people are working, how many hours they're putting in, and the, the fear that just consumes everyone but failure to pass this referendum. We, we just, I don't think can take the chance. I think it's irresponsible to take that chance when we feel we have, we have an option that isn't everything we want or need, but I believe it's an option that we can pass in the community, we can sell to the community as long as we all stick together. So by my calculations and what I've been listening to, our recommendation would be to do option two, three-year recurring. Anybody else? Go ahead and add your two cents, but I think that's where we are.
And whatever decision we make, I'll be making, requesting an amendment to that decision.
Okay.
What is, what do you mean?
What the amendment will be, we receive Weaver funding annually. What I would suggest is that whatever the balance that we receive this year, unless it's been spent already, that we use the difference between this year and future gains that we gain from Weaver, because of increased student enrollment, that that goes towards teacher salaries.
And am I right? We don't, this year, we've already promised, this coming year, we've promised them, the staff.
Yeah, yeah. They're in the, they're already in the year, they're being paid.
This upcoming year is covered.
This, yeah, this coming year is covered. It's the following year, so.
Because I would anticipate rather significant increase next time they pay the district.
Yeah, I think, I think those are really two separate things. The referendum resolution has to be specific to the question that's on the ballot. I think the board could discuss, you know, finding ways, including Weaver funding, to address staff salary and benefits to get to that, which is, I think you're both, you and Megan Chapman are sort of saying the same thing.
Yeah.
If we pay the, I just call it the price tag of option two, but make other adjustments, increased revenues, other cuts that are non-staffing.
Yeah.
That you could get the benefit and increase the salaries of the staff to that option three level.
Option three level.
And again, I would just want to make sure that we actually do that with that difference in Weaver funding from one year to the next.
Understood.
The mechanics of that can be taken care of?
Yeah.
Because I mean, I did the math between option two and option three, and it's $150,000 year one. I believe it's $300,000 year two and $450,000 year three. So I think if it's, I think those dollars amount are very, very feasible, just looking at some of the expenditures that I've seen on a year-over-year basis.
And then also taking into consideration increasing revenue, whether it's, like, for example, seniors will pay whatever to park in the parking lot, right? Like, I know my children, they were so excited every time they got to park in the parking lot. So maybe that's an option, like, just throwing it out there as an example, you know?
Yeah, other avenues. It'll, it'll take, it would take a combination of things. But I think Tommy's a good point, is we can't depend on Weaver funding. We currently are, depending upon Weaver to fill our gap, but we can't depend on increasing enrollment in Weaver to fund our budget. However, we can make sure that we use those increased revenues, whatever they may be, beyond the 1.4 million that we are getting now, to go directly towards, that that's our priority as, as a board, is to increase staff salaries as close to that.
I think as reported earlier, I think Weaver is anticipating providing our district with 1.7 million next time. So that's quite a jump.
Yep, we're at 1.4 now and 1.7, and they're projecting increasing enrollment beyond that. We also have other things, you know, the board in January will be making decisions about how many of our open, brick and mortar open enrollment spots you want to allocate, which is also increased revenue to the, to the district for that, particularly given that we have slightly declining enrollment right now. So there's, there's many decisions that I think will provide some opportunities moving forward.
Great opportunities moving forward.
I agree. I will, I will make one last plug for option two versus option three. If we think we can sell option two, it's 20 to the community, and we think that there's data to support that we can sell it, and that's what some of us have said, it's $27 more per year in the first year.
I had a similar thought on that as well.
So if we think we can sell number two, and we have support there, I don't think it takes a lot more effort to sell option three, to really show the value that they're getting for that next $27.
My gut on that is the fact that the people who are involved, the know people who are involved in that, you know, community organized group, I don't think they're going to raise a whole lot of flags if we go with option number two. I think option number three becomes one of these, perhaps silly, but becomes this, you know, it's like a, a point where draw the line in the sand, and they're not going to, they're not going to, my feeling is, at this point, let's go with that. I'm pretty confident something's going to happen this spring as well, the Weaver. I think there's a lot of things we have going for us, and more than anything, I think we pull together. And it gets back to, again, we've got to pass something.
None of that will matter if we fail the referendum.
Oh, exactly. Absolutely.
None of it.
Yeah, and we don't want to make this community suffer. That's, and that's what happens. Everyone suffers.
Well, I think everyone, everyone suffers even with the passing, passing it.
That's true, but that's already happening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, yeah, let's keep focused, our kids. What is it that they need? Anything, yeah, certainly the financial aspect sort of overrides everything, but it's the kids that help build the foundation of our school district.
No doubt.
It's the teachers that support them.
And we need to have a school district that at least resembles the one that we've had to this point.
Yes.
And I'm not so sure that that's already in trouble. This upcoming year is not going to be the same or what we want necessarily because of the cuts that we've already had to make. Yeah, I guess, I just, I'm, I'm most comfortable with option two, three-year recurring as the, I think that very well could be the maximum that we could pass, in my opinion. There, I can't, I can't begin to thank all of you people out there for the efforts that you're putting forth and the efforts that you're willing to put forth moving forward. Without your help, we don't stand a chance. We, we, we're in such unknown territory here for this school district that part of me wants to say, we've, we've got to ask for the, what we feel we need to do right by our staff, administration, and students. And I'm not sure that that's the same as something we can pass. I think we need to pass something, and then we can go from there. But if it doesn't pass, I'm not even sure. I don't even, I don't even want to think about what those next few days would be. So if unless someone has strident objections to option two, three-year recurring, I feel like that's the recommendation that we should make.
Someone would need to make a motion?
I have a language potential.
Do you?
You're so cute. I'm sorry. You're just adorable.
Can I have the questions up there?
Okay. So if you were to do a motion for option two, three-year recurring, it would be something along the lines of, I motion to approve the following resolution to exceed the revenue limit and calling an aspirational referendum election and maintain programming. And the question would be, shall the school district of McFarland, Dane County, Wisconsin, be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in section 121.91 Wisconsin statutes? Excuse me. Oh, thank you for training that on a sec. Just realized my mic not, yeah, my mic not, so, excuse me. Section 121.91 Wisconsin statutes, buy $1,750,000 for the 2024, 2025 school year, buy an additional $1,750,000, for a total of $3,500,000 for the 25, 2026 school year, and buy an additional $1,750,000 for a total of $5,250,000 for the 2026, 2027 school year and thereafter, for recurring purposes consisting of staff salaries and benefits. Well done.
Also, I'll make that motion.
And I will, second. We don't have to say it. Do we have to say it all?
Okay.
No, it's up there, by the way. But except for the, you know, hereby resolved. So notice that this language is different from what we did in April. And the, the most significant difference that you will see is it talks about for a total of. And that is new language that is added. You're not required to, as we ran this through legal counsel, they said you are not required to add that. We felt, and why we're bringing this forward to you for consideration with all of the recurring options, we felt like it was very transparent, that someone going to the ballot box can see what we're trying to say, what we're asking for. The previous language, though unintentionally, was confusing to people, and so this is, both meets legal requirements and also makes it clear that that, that it's a three-year progression, but that accumulates, you know, and then it stays thereafter.
And to note, sorry, to note, for anyone watching, the 5.25 million, we asked for 10.6 in April.
Yeah. We've almost cut that in half.
So it's less, it's, it's more than half, actually, because half would be 5.3.
That is a big jump.
I believe so.
Erin, when I read that, when you have in parentheses for a total of $5,250,000, I connected that to the $1,750,000. Is it possible to put the total amount at the end of that, at the end of that paragraph? You know, where you have that parentheses, just put that after benefits for a total of?
Yeah.
I found that confusing myself.
I guess I'm not.
Oh, like it could be?
Put, you know, in the parentheses.
Can you just say?
Yeah, for a total of $5,250,000. Delete that part and, or cut it and put it after the word benefits.
Read it how you want it.
Okay. 1.7 million for the 2024, 2025 school year, by an additional 1.750,000, for a total of $3,500,000 for the 25, 26 school year, and by an additional $1,750,000 for the 26, 27 school year and thereafter, for recurring purposes consisting of staff salaries and benefits.
Yeah.
In parentheses, for a total of $5,250,000.
I think we have to do it this way.
Yeah, I think so, too. Because otherwise, it's saying for a total of 5.2.
Well, for the whole thing.
For the whole thing, but it's, it's, the first year, we're asking for 1.7, the second year, we're asking for 3.5, the third year, we're asking for 5.2.
That we have confusion here. Think of the people that are going to. Think of the people that are going to vote on this.
What most districts do is they say by an additional one point seven five, by an additional one point seven five, by an additional one point seven five for recurring purposes. That's what we did before. And it makes, it lead, can lead people to think that you've just added one point seven five and you're just doing it each year for three years. When in fact you're, you're adding another one point seven five. So that's why we have the four.
Okay, okay.
I can't think of a simpler way.
That, that legal stuff, it's totally confusing.
Gets in the way.
It gets in the way.
I, I don't know, I mean, you can take those words out legally, our, a legal counsel said you don't need to put the four a total. We felt that you do in order to help inform the voter.
And I concur with the transparency piece.
So here's a question. Would it be less confusing if we said one point seven five million for a total of three point five million and write out million instead of all the zeros? Would that make it easier for people to understand?
I think you may need to actually put the zeros.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think so too.
I'm just looking at it from like a, like, that's a lot of zeros, Joe. And I mean, it is a lot of zeros, but.
And, and what some districts do, including DeForest, Sun Prairie's kind of stepped up. I think DeForest, the one that they're coming forward with, is not a stepped up. They're just saying 2025, 26, we need, I think it's seven point nine million.
Yep.
So they're just going right to the finish line.
Right.
And we're doing a stepped up and using fund balance to spread that out. Just to ease the burden to the tax, taxpayer. Which I think is, works for us.
And that's another, that's another key educational piece is how much or how little we have to use as a fund balance. And the ramifications of using, the more fund balance you use, the less revenue you have the following year. If we, if we go from thirteen point six to, to ten point six?
Yes.
Or higher, then we don't have to do any short-term borrowing. Which is, you know, to me critically important, but even just taking it from thirteen point six down to let's say ten point eight, that cuts in half the revenue that we get the following year. We, we'll go from four hundred and five thousand down to two hundred and five thousand.
And just interest revenue.
Yeah, that's correct.
See, and, and we understand that. But many in the community just say that we have thirteen million in fund balance. Use some, use more of that. They don't have that background as far as the interest earning.
Well, and the borrowing.
Yeah.
You know, we, we.
It's just like a credit card.
We worked a long time to not have to do short-term borrowing.
I know we have over the years.
So are we ready to vote on it? Are we, are we happy with the language?
Again, I'm okay. This would be my second choice. I will agree with it reluctantly. And I think it's important for me to, you know, be a yes for this. Because one thing I don't want, the paper report is that there were four yeses and one no. And then the community thinking, well, one board member doesn't think it's worth it.
And I'm on the same page as you where, you know, I, I would love four-year, non-recurring, but I'm not going to be the one who says no. One team, one drink.
And I, I appreciate both of you for that. So I'm willing to be the one that if we, if we're going to catch black for this, I'll take that responsibility. Because I think it's just, it's just so important that this thing passes.
You can't take responsibility, we all have two responsibilities.
It's true, it's split.
I'm willing.
I'm with Tom.
And I'm willing, yep.
But I appreciate it. And I know that there are going to be folks that are less than pleased that feel we can, we can sell something bigger. If I was out there, I would feel the same way. I just feel like the responsible thing for us to do is to bring forward a question that we all feel can pass.
And please understand, y'all, this is not easy for any of us.
Yeah, right, that's true.
It isn't.
We've been stressing out a long time for this.
Well, now that, but once we approve the question, I'll sleep better.
I'll sleep.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yes, well, that's good.
Okay.
So I just, I was just playing, do you like that better? I changed it for, so that it's a little more parallel, one point seven five for this school year, by an additional one point seven five for that school year for a total of.
I like that.
By an additional.
Yeah, I like that.
That flow a little better.
Yeah.
It's the same thing.
Right.
Well, let's make that change.
Do we have, do we have to make an emotion?
Yeah, I wonder.
To change it?
Have we made a motion?
We haven't voted on it yet.
But I don't even think we have a motion yet.
No, she made it in the second.
Yeah, you've got a motion.
Oh, we had a discussion.
Okay.
If the person who motions makes a, with a.
They can make an amendment.
And the person who seconds agrees with that is the
Are we making an amendment?
So then I.
The person who made the motion because they're their motion.
Oh, okay.
So I make an amendment to my motion to use the language that Erin is changing right now.
That's so fancy.
To what it, it, to what he has changed it to now.
You would like to amend your motion?
I would like to amend my motion.
To read.
To read. Blah, blah, blah. One point seven five, or one thou, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand for the 2024, 25 school year by an additional one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the 25, 26 school year for a total of three million, five hundred thousand. And by an, an additional one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand for the 26, 27 school year for a total of five million, two hundred and fifty thousand and thereafter for recurring purposes consisting of staff salaries and benefits.
I would add just and after that first pair, that first comma. So one hundred and, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand for 2024, 25 school year and just though you did it in the next sentence, yeah, I think that reads more consistent.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Can we pretend I just read it like that?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
And I will second that amendment.
Yeah.
Is that the, is that the proper procedure?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have a motion, we have an amended motion, seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously by zero. And thank you very much to everyone who is here. Thank you to the board, administration for your patience and diligence. And let's move forward.
And can we even thank the people who didn't get everything they wanted, but were giving us their hundred percent why they wanted what they wanted?
That's what I tried.
I know, you did it. And I just want to thank them all.
But guess what, folks, we got more stuff to talk about.
Yeah.
We do.
But not anything as important as this.
Yeah. What, and what I heard the board, a couple of board members say, and I saw some nods was if we can make budget adjustments
Oh, gosh, yes.
to increase the staff salary and benefits, the compensation package to that level, option three compensation, let's, let's make a commitment to do whatever we can to make that happen at the price tag for option two.
Well, well said.
Yes.
And we're going to, we have that, that power, we can bring that up as putting on the agenda. I, I feel the same thing about the associate principal that was, so I think it's going to be a priority for me. Let's see how we do.
That's fine.
Yep.
All right.
All right, moving on. Action on approval of second reading and adoption of policies. I, I don't want to read all of those off, it is the second reading. So I would look for a motion to approve as recommended.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none.
I made the motion, yep.
Okay, yep.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero and I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn meeting.
Megan C., Bruce, you got second?
Yes.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero, we are adjourned at nine eighteen.
We'll be right back.